And I'm not editing it.
What's the window? I'm putting it there.
No fear. Oh, I almost wrecked my chair there. Whoa.
You're not that big.
I almost got blood on my chair. I might have to start over again.
Morning. How are you?
I like that password. Dot, 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 dot.
That would actually work.
Why?
Call the November 18th West County Commissioner to order. Does anybody care about doing the vacation before we get into county business?
I'll do that. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the moisture that we've given us the last couple of days. We ask that you are with us today in this meeting to help us make decisions and give us the wisdom to make the correct decisions and be patient with one another. We ask you to bless the citizens of our county in the name of Jesus.
Stand if you care to.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or changes to the agenda?
Could be the memorial.
Anybody have anything to add? This is from my kid. That grant company that the airports working with kept emailing me and I kept going through junk mail. But the certificate, the state grant that needs signed, chairman's signature, Becky Dowd's original copy now, so I think maybe we could put that under new business and get that completed. Is everybody okay with that?
Chairman's signature?
Yep. And that goes down to the city, I believe, right?
Mr. Chair, I'm Mr. Approved Again as Amendment.
Second. We got one more. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vera.
I asked the chairman if we could possibly postpone our training with Homeland Security this afternoon until mid-December.
I'm okay with that. And Vera would like to be a part of that, so.
Let's make sure we know that governor knows.
Yeah.
So let me give him the heads up.
I can't wait to tell them.
That'd be awesome, so please.
Local government, LGLP, let's go that route, needs us to select a, what is it? A board member? Brad Bass and/or Amy Miller? I don't know any of these individuals, but apparently they need our vote. Oh, and Jessica Weaver. So there's three on here, I guess. Follow along and make a decision if there's one that we prefer to select, maybe in our new business as well.
And which board is that?
It's the LGLP Local Government Liability Pool. If that's okay with the motion maker?
It is.
All right. Not all of the favor of the amendment as agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
The amendment as agenda?
Oh, did I say that? I was thinking of this.
I was too. I stood in that going, this might catch me all day long.
Everything's changed.
Yeah.
That it's easy to switch them around.
Amendment as agenda. Amendment as agenda. Forever on page. All right, public comment. Is there any public comment?
And I'm gonna run down and tell Gilbert.
Thank you.
Uh, minutes in November 4th, 2025. I have one, it was just a spell on there. It said issued, should be issues on moving Homeland Security under commissioners. And then on the Title 25 deal, right? Had a conversation with Mr. Taylor. He didn't, doesn't have a cage, but he does have the ability to restrain people and want that to be known. It's not, he's not just throwing them in the back of the van. And also, he does not have a nurse, but does have somebody typically to ride along if he needs help.
And he's a senior, too, isn't he?
Don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe so. I believe he's a senior.
Hmm, okay. Is that's okay with? Anything? Yeah, sure.
Okay, I have a couple. Can we put the titles on the resolutions? So like 2020, 25 is Boca, 26 is law enforcement, whatever, sobriety program, and the 27th is the public health emergency prep. Just because, as you guys all know, I love to go back to minutes and any information is wonderful 20 years from now. Also on detention center, could we add something to the effect of, more discussed it as being an unfounded mandate, it may have to be brought to our legislators as price for a new is approximately $43,000. I think that's important. Under hanger, I'm sorry, I can give this to you.
Okay.
Under hanger, could we put between, on the second line, put update, it says get an update on the hanger account, could we put the word proposed hanger account? I mean, we did officially do it, but the question was proposed. And then after auditor, comma, Paul Still, what is, I mean, on either party and teleprompted by AI procurement? I think I'm a liar myself. Go ahead and sign it, though. How come he doesn't sign it first?
Interesting.
I don't know if Tina ever brought that down.
We did wanna.
What's the same thing that was signed before?
I think what the thought was is, you know, dealing with the child support authority and your hope that it's all for the best and everything's doing on and off enough. I assume it is, it's just, I do agree with Marty, there is some confusion on what are we doing? But that is interesting. Why wouldn't the governor sign it and say this is what we're doing? And then each county falls in line, but. I don't know. Let's put it to the board.
Are you comfortable with it, Marty? Are you guys both comfortable with it, the way it's been presented to us?
Yeah, I got Michael going through it.
Yeah, it's just, it's not nothing, but it's just making sure it's all complying with the current law. It doesn't change her role or the county's role or anything, so.
I make a motion to approve the chairman's signature amendment one to the law for eighty agreement for responsibility between Wyoming Department of Family Service, Child Support Program, and Western County Cert of District Board.
Second.
You got all that? Discussion. Motion properly made and seconded. All those in favor of the chairman's signature on the aforementioned motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky Key. Thanks, Michael, for running up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to put in the editorial out there. One of my frustrations is, that's what happens, these just get plucked.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky Key. Thanks, Michael, for running up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to put in the editorial out there. One of my frustrations is, that's what happens, these just get plucked. And there's an assumption that we'll just sign it without having any discussion of what we're doing, what is occurring. If it doesn't harm us, it doesn't hurt us, then what's the difference? Well, I still would like to know. What is it that we're signing? It's important to me that if we affix your signature or anybody else's a signature, that we have, we're cognizant of what we're doing and not made that it's just presumptive that we'll do it because we've always done it. I don't think that's progress. And that's just my approach. Thank you for letting me have it.
And I probably haven't done that. There's a lot of things that it just seems like it becomes second nature as you plow through it. Treasury report.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we approved the Treasury report. Second.
I'll put the second amendment, approve the Treasury report. Any discussion? Hang on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's cold.
If you're under, if you're in contact with the.
So that's what, anyway, that's what, and everything's going really good out there. I mean, we have the four seasons, we're gonna rent it from Florida every day during the week, so. And then the event center's still being rented, even with the bathroom the way it is, because it is functional, it's just a little cold in there. And they're supposed to start on it as soon as they get the, the support. I don't know when that's gonna be, but it's, it is gonna be soon, I hope, before the weather gets turned bad.
On that, the exterior part of the event center where the tin was damaged, it sounds like they're gonna do the repairs to the corner, so that also will be taken care of, whether it be a different style of tan or maybe slightly different color, whatever the case might be, it's gonna be.
Yeah. As I understand it, yes.
Correct, so fixing two things with one.
So when you say there was another bid out there, did somebody come in and give you?
Twenty-one electric gave us another bid for the whole shebang, you know, like changing the lights out fairly, which I don't think we do because we don't use the light, people don't use the lights as much as they could, because some people ride in the dark. I mean, it's just, but I've got that activity, I've got to see it.
I'm curious as to what the cost is, I guess. I imagine it's real cheap.
But it's not cheap. I did make copies of that.
It's less expensive than I thought.
I'm surprised.
Is the lighting that's in there, Francie, is it mercury vapor right now?
I could have.
Does it take a while to warm up?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I really don't know. They're like today and see that question, but. I think it does too. I think it will. Just want to let you know that's what we're thinking of. And again, we just cannot get people out there to give us bids. This is the only one we can get. We had a guy come and look at it from Morecraft, but he's not giving us a bid yet. So it's like, it's a funny problem. Yeah.
It's a common.
Yeah, so. And this, and it's really frustrating.
And this other bid, that includes fixing the contractor box, so that's included in there.
Does this, is this all the lighting? It says 23 lights, but it's specific to the east and west ends of where the stalls are at. Is this also for the main arena?
I think so.
Okay.
I could find out.
It doesn't look like it's worded that way.
Yeah, it's, I can.
And it says above the stalls, so it doesn't really say how in the middle.
But it says in the riding arena. There probably would have been a comma there above the stalls on both these ones. See, so it says in the riding arena.
Right.
So that would be the major portion of that. Yeah. I say this because we have a comma key down on the end.
If I were writing that, I would put 23 lights in the riding arena, comma, above the stalls, comma.
Well, I could get it from them. I can do that. I think I made my point.
I don't know.
Because they're really big lights in the arena. I don't know as if there would be 23. There's probably that many and then down.
They're caged too. Those ones in the ring are caged. Yeah. But I can get more information, I just thought I'd get this for the arena. But I think I'll take pictures.
The arena covers the whole area. There's not individual ones down at the stall.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, when I was a kid, there was. I don't know. I do, I don't watch since I'm a kid.
I don't know for sure. I haven't looked at that thing. I guess I need to go out there and look at this. I know times have changed, but when I boarded horses out there, you could turn on one side.
Yeah, you still can.
And so, I mean, they were, they were your.
Is Paul aware that voucher was approved by the board? What I have.
He says it needs to be reissued. Though there needs to be discussion as we're voiding something in the prior budget. I don't think we're voiding something.
I don't either. Just paying.
We're paying.
It's already paid.
Now, just calling, me calling people, is this against the rules or am I supposed to quit? Am I supposed to? I'm just trying to clear up my books when I do this.
My only suggestion is that is if you know and you have a monthly thing of that showing, you know when the budget year's gonna end.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be a problem for us. I mean, we've already, I mean, that's what we're running into. I think the appropriate thing, even though the state statute says you have year and then you have five, it says in the state statute you have a year, but then the reissue or whatever, you can come back and come to the board county commissioners to get.
We do try to watch them, but we still do give them a timely manner to get them checked. I'm not gonna call them every month, cash your check. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna hang out there for a few months before I do call person.
Well, and I, there is some personal responsibility, I think.
Yeah, there is. There is, but there's also, I like to push it to the books.
If you were to find, and I'm not saying you would do this, if you were to find the original check and then go and cash those checks, where do we sit?
It wouldn't clear.
It wouldn't clear.
Okay.
Why wouldn't if we didn't put a stop payment on it?
Because it's the same check number.
Same check number.
However you have to handle it, I'm not gonna argue about that.
But it wouldn't, because you don't, your checks are all numbered. So it'd be a different check. Nope. It's just a two stores of different checks. So by not putting a stop payment on it, then you're, I think you're opening yourself up to cash those checks.
Okay, I can put a stop payment on for like 25 bucks, but I just try to avoid that. But I can do it.
We can, we have a plan. See, that's where we run into the problem with the last of school year. That's where.
But we're not voiding the, we're not voiding the payment, we're voiding the check. The payment's already been made.
I know. The only way to do it with a stop payment is to avoid that other one and then go to the last of school year.
Maybe that's a conversation that needs to happen with the individual that, that you wanted to forego a $25 stop payment fee on, I mean, how's it our problem?
Well, that's whatever. Is it worth it to you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it worth it to you to pay the stop payment?
And if he knows that he never issued, he might shred the other one or bring it in at a different time. Bring in the $25, minus $25 stop payment.
Maybe go down that road.
What's that?
See if he's willing to pay the stop payment fee on it and if he is.
I don't think he's, I think the county should beat that.
What?
I'm not gonna walk around and ask everybody, well, you didn't pay your check, well, now you have to pay $25 more out of your bit, out of your payment, just so, just so we can give you a new check.
But I do think there's some personal responsibility as a benefit.
Yes, there is.
And I don't think it's our job to babysit them.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure that, if he wants that check back, I'm of the, and maybe this has to be a policy, I don't even know if it's legal for us to do that. Well, I'm throwing that on them, that's not even fair. By the way, Michael, is that legal for us? That's not fair for him not to have a little research of Anthony, really frustrated here. I'm having side conversations and I can't hear anything, so I'm talking.
I think we ought to ask Paul if we can live, if we can do, pass on the stop payment through to the government, deducted from their check, you know, and reissue the check.
If I were to put a check in that I got reissued, the liability in my understanding would be me because I'm a fraud. I put that check in twice. That's fraud on my part.
True. Now, wouldn't give us a case, that would.
No, then you'd have a case because you dang well knew that you deposited that check twice.
And it would come on your report that that check was hit twice. The first time that that would be hit twice like that, you would have an intention, and I think then you go to your county attorney and say, hey, we have a problem here. This person, this vendor either pays us back or we file charges.
Okay, I guess I don't feel comfortable until we talk it over with Paul.
So how about we table it to the next meeting and individuals can have a conversation, see if we can get Paul on the phone or something.
What if he miraculously finds his check and goes and cashes it?
You'll see it, right?
You don't count it.
Probably be solved. Yeah, but I mean, that's a good.
And Mr. Chairman, that's where my issue is. The problem would be solved if he found the check and he cashed it. It's all good.
And stuff happens even at post-office, who knows if he ever got it, you know? It's one of those things, you know, I'm not saying that he lost it, he probably did, but go ahead.
Okay, I want the ruling of the board. Do I call him? Do I ignore him or just let it go and I don't get my books balanced?
I think we're at a point right now where you call him and say, we got a visual of our.
Okay. But I mean, in the, in the future.
I don't have a problem with you calling him.
Because I can, I can drop it right now and not worry about it and the books will be unbalanced.
I think, personal opinion, you should call him as soon as possible. I mean, if you.
That's what we tried to do.
Yeah.
Because I remember prior to me being a county commissioner, you would call me and say, you haven't cashed that check.
Correct.
And in fact, when I became a commissioner, I didn't do direct deposits and I was, remember? Because I was.
You drag your foot on your paycheck. I said, Marty, you're gonna cash your checks?
Well, do you remember why? Because I was trying to get, I was going to pay the bill for the WCCA, so I was holding the check in order to give it back to the county. And you said to me, you're holding that check, you're messing me up. So I think that's appropriate because you were on my case within.
Couple months.
Couple, not even a couple months, a couple weeks. So what I'm asking is be that diligent on those vendors that are doing that too.
Or if they don't do it, I'm just gonna write them off, I guess. I'm supposed to turn stuff over to unclaimed properties. Now, is that a no-go-to?
I think what you do, you follow the statute here that says within, by December 31st, you come in here and say, I have.
No, it's just the first Monday in December.
Yeah, but by December 31st is when you cancel. So you come in the first week of December and say, I have XYZ that are sitting here. They will be canceled by the fiscal year.
Then I turn them over, let's say then if I turn them over to unclaimed properties, we have to pay unclaimed properties.
Does the statute say that?
That's how unclaimed properties works. I don't have that statute in front of me.
So you're issuing a check into unclaimed properties?
And so then.
You have two live, you have a live check out there potentially?
So that person can go to unclaimed properties and get their money from unclaimed properties after I pay them.
I think Paul needs to be in this conversation.
Mr. Chairman, we need to look on that one, because if you chose as a vendor not to cash your check, I don't know if that goes. Because most of the time unclaims is where I didn't know I even had it or I couldn't.
Well, you were issued it and you lost it.
Well, you were issued it and you lost it.
So I have to turn anything over to unclaimed properties for a while then.
All right, would you have a more? So you're going to get Paul and. I'm not going to be.
Quick question. Since you brought that up on unclaimed, would that keep our books clean if we turn that, if we turn it into unclaimed?
I gave them a check.
And then they reclaim it from that.
Yep, it's gone out of our budget but we paid it twice.
We wouldn't have to reissue a check on that.
The problem that you run into is the check is still out there. Interesting dilemma. Thought we had it solved.
With your license extension.
I haven't sent you guys all that letter.
So they're selling the business and they just want to make sure that it's still attached to the business as they go through the sale of it.
Well, they had it sold and then something fell through with the lender. So they're not sure when it's going to go through. And their, their extension will be up on the fourth. And state statutes, they're allowed an additional year. Already been non-operational for a year.
So basically it's a year to be non-operational, then we can extend it.
Yeah.
So what does it mean when they wrote, our state liquor license, our license fee has been paid up until June of 2026? What does it mean?
That they have to pay for their liquor license every, that it's renewed every July of every year.
So my question that I'm asking is that it's not done until June of 2026. What are we extending?
The non-operational. They're non-operational right now. They are not operating. So they, they have so many days to let me or state know that they are not open, that they're not operating. And so they're given a year to then become operational.
Probably so that somebody can't sit on a liquor license for 100 years.
Right.
Keeping it non-operational.
So I'm still lost. What did they pay up until June of 2026, the original license?
The renewal. Everybody renews every year. They renew their licenses every year.
Okay.
Whether they're operational or non-operational.
So if they renew their license, I'm just, I'm just trying to be the devil's advocate here. Because I, I'm confused why I'm renewing something that's not due. So if there's two separate things. If, if they renewed their license and it's not up until June of 2026, if they should come in and sell it right now, isn't it viable? I mean, is it still good?
Yeah. We're not renewing anything. We're just, we're extending the non-operational. We're not renewing, their license was renewed in July.
Whatever is it? Because the state requires you to be selling alcohol this whole time.
Yes.
They want to see that. So if you're not, if your license is current, but you're not selling any alcohol, it's reporting to the state, hey, my license is still good, I'm just not selling right now. What we're doing is we're not extending the liquor license itself. We're just extending the time that they're allowed not to sell. Because if the state can get on their case for not selling alcohol even though they have a liquor license, it's to keep them licensed from being stale and just sitting there.
Got to be something in statute, I'm guessing, in this case. You can't, to keep somebody from holding a stale license forever. I can see if you had somebody that didn't believe in selling liquor and they got a hold of one of those things. I don't know. I mean, then more would be.
Mr. Chairman. I'd ask our attorney again, but the way I understood it at one time is you had to buy X amount of liquor within that liquor license. Am I right? And that's why your license, that was your non, because you weren't buying alcohol for that reason. And if you did not buy alcohol within that year, that year of your license, then you could ask for the extension.
So within that year, you can ask state for an extension.
You're in it for the fun? Yeah, I love folklore and storytelling and for me Halloween is, we celebrate it, we do the costumes. And I love to watch horror movies and eat garbage. And I don't, you know, think my kids candy. But you know, I've heard it said that, you know, sometimes horror movies, ghosts, monsters are really just, you know, what metaphors for the other things we're really afraid of but can't address directly. Maybe it's healthy to get this out of our system. As a, as a kid, if I heard a bump in the night, I'd be terrified. As an adult, if I hear a bump in the night, I'm terrified. It's the furnace and I have to pay for it. You know, maybe they're, maybe it was fun sometimes to be afraid of things that in most cases couldn't really hurt you instead of worrying about debt or child abduction or, you know, cancer or something that really is a threat. It's fun to be afraid of things that can't really hurt you.
Within that year, you can ask state for an extension. They can only do that first year of non-operational. If they need it to exceed after that, they have to come to you guys to get this additional period not to exceed one year. Do you?
I don't, I don't, because what I feel like is we're cheating them out of six months is what I feel like. I feel like we're cheating them out of six months. I feel like we're cheating the seller out six months because of the liquor license holder. Because if they were to go open today at that West End and buy their $500 worth of alcohol, they're still within compliance.
They, they would then be operational.
They would be operational.
Yes.
If they did it tomorrow. So what I'm saying is what makes the difference? Shouldn't we extend that June or July 1st of 2026? Because they would not no longer be in compliance.
So they started being non-operational last December. It wasn't in June or July. They had renewed.
They didn't become non-operational when they renewed. They became non-operational six months before their license needed to be renewed. That's where we got the six months lapse in this.
So my, my curiosity is. I feel like we're cheating them out of six months. I just.
I don't think you are. I think the moment they go operational, they notify the state. And what we're giving them is a grievance, a relief period, grace period to say, okay, we're okay. We understand you're selling your business. So we don't want to take that aspect of the value of your business away from you during this selling process. So you're non-operational for X amount of time.
If, now if they, if they don't sell it July of next year of 26, their license expires. So this extra six months doesn't matter, right?
So December 4th of last year, they went non-operational. We can give them extension for a year until December 4th of next year. The renewal, if they don't renew in July, which is when Weston County renews, then they lose that license and then they lose the value of their business.
Mr. Chair. Within, if we extend this within that one-year timeframe, they can choose to become operational at any time, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the non-operational status extension for liquor license.
Second.
Our motion on the floor, properly seconded to renew the non-operational portion of the liquor license. Discussion.
So here's my question for you. So tomorrow they, we give this extension. Tomorrow they sell it. Did we just apply that, that non-compliance? That gives that, that new buyer a full year?
No.
They bought the license.
They're buying the July through June license is what they're buying. Not the extension of non-operational. If they want to go non-operational, the new buyers, because they'll do a transfer.
Right.
They'll have the paperwork, do the transfer and everything. Then they get a new license until June 31st, 30th. And then they have to renew for July. And that's where they have that full year to be operational that the state will give them, so they don't become operational right away.
So if they don't get an extension of six months, if they were to buy it tomorrow?
They have a year if they buy it tomorrow. They have that extension from state to become operational for a year.
They have, they'll have a year from the day the license is transferred.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Tosed.
No.
Thank you. Credit card policy. Changes we asked, what we're in there, right?
Yep, move to approve the brand-new Weston County credit card use agreement.
Second.
Properly seconded to approve the Weston County credit card use agreement. New notation, so everybody will probably need to fill out new paper. Discussion.
Call for a question.
Please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Tosed. Aaron here.
Hey. All right, hello, are you guys?
Good, are you?
Hello. And Nick, I can't do my copy, bye.
Perfect, thank you.
That works for you. So, Erin Kershey, 4H educator with the Weston County Extension Office. Today, I have, Vicki is here with me, and then I have Dr. Matt Healy, who is the 4H Associate Director for Extension, and Dr. Dan Alpec, who is the Associate Director for the CDH and Ag Teams. So we're excited for them to join us and so I thought I'd just start with just our regular update. So Vicki did with Julie Daniels, thank you for her name disappeared, the Building Better Boards Workshop, on, clear my mind, October 22nd. There were 13 people that attended that, so that was really great. It's always good to have that checked off the list for the year. So we just finished up with Epic week before last, which is our Extension Professional Improvement Conference that we go to every year. And it's really fun because we get to celebrate all of the awards that we've done for the past year. So Vicki has a pretty extensive list of awards that she worked on this last year, which is really exciting because we won state, regional, and placed at nationals as well. So her communication, communications. Thanks Vicki, you can talk about your awards. I don't, you're here. I'll go for it. You're good.
But it's your last.
It is, it is. I'd have to see the list because I want to leave this year. I'm going out with a fan.
Bingo.
So we did Cooking It Up from the zucchini patch. That was a grant and we developed three cookbooks with using specially cropped produce, which was the tomatoes and tomatillos. One was on peppers and one was on zucchini or summer squash.
May I enter, what is it, what is a what?
Tomatillo.
Yeah, what's that?
Some of them call it a husk tomato. A lot of Hispanic cuisine uses it. Salsa verde is green, it uses tomatillos. It's sort of like a hard, green tomato. They carry them at Woody's a lot. They got a paper wrapping around them. Kind of a tart citrusy flavor.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll have to get you one.
Absolutely. Well, let's not, let's talk about the cooking.
Oh, okay. So anyway, that, that was a set of three publications and we won nationally second place. So for Wyoming, that's, that's amazing out of all the United States. Second place I'll take. Would have loved to have had first place, but there's a lot of competition, even regionally. I can't remember how many states are in a region.
13 states and then we have the Samoan Islands. So there's like four provinces and then the 13 western states.
So it's, you know, it's quite an honor to, to win that. I was part of the Wyoming Walks team in which we did several Wyoming walks. And so that also won a third-place national award. The Wyoming Walks was done, I was also, you know, again, it's, a lot of them are teams because there's only a few of us in community by town in our house. So we work as a team as much as we can. I put in a, just a written media, one of my columns, and so I got a first place Western Region Award. And then the winner was a surprise, was the Extension Team Excellence Recognition for Harvest Bucks. So what we did is we got together and several of the farmers markets issued a coin and the coins were distributed to different people. We had, I believe, four farmers markets. And then the people would go in and buy produce, fresh produce. So like the coin was worth maybe $3, $5. So that was a trial program in which hopefully they'll keep up and expand it to do more farmers markets. So there was a grant and a pool of money with which to do that, to encourage more people to get out and consume fruits and vegetables. Been a busy year. Congratulations. Thank you.
Wrapping up with that, Vicki is retiring. So her last day in the office is going to be December 23rd. So, and I did bring some retirement invitations as well to bring up to the courthouse. So the open house is December 9th from 11 to 2 at the Extension Office. So we'd invite everybody to drop in that day and celebrate Vicki's 28 years with extension. So and then on my side of things, I was really excited. So my, Vicki's awards were through NEA FCSO, the National Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. I'm a member of the National Association of Extension 4H Youth Development Professionals. And so my promotional package individual was the National 4H Week Promotion and it won the state and Western Region. The periodical publication individual, which was, is my Weston County chatter, won state and the Western Region. And then my educational piece individual was my Passport to 4H, which was the program I put together for my new to 4H last year and it won the state. And then upcoming, while we were at Epic, so some lots of learning there, some great networking, that kind of stuff. And then we have a regional 4H listening session happening in two weeks and then county coordinator training. It's just a Zoom training for getting more, so I'm excited for that. And then on the 4H side of the world, the 26 4H year enrollment is going crazy. We've got 29 completed enrollments on the 4H member side with seven pending. So we're right on track of what we've been the last year or two on getting everybody re-enrolled, which is great. And then on the volunteer side, I've got 17, seven and nine pending with some more volunteers to get encouraged to get done as we really start all of our programming. So this last month, enrollment has been a big part, part of what we're doing. Last night we had launching into 4H, so our new to 4H dinner. We had a grilled cheese bar and just talked about how to be a successful 4H member in their first year. We have tons of project learning opportunities happening. Um, we have tons of project learning opportunities happening, um, with some volunteer trainings coming up and spending a lot of time just getting twenty-twenty-six planned out, ready to roll out. So on the back, I just kind of highlighted our bigger projects, areas that are really going. So robotics, we kicked off in October with our, um, they've just been meeting once a month, and they'll meet through December, and then we'll really pick up practices after that. I'm excited, we're going to host a Northeast Region Robotics Contest, um, in the late spring prior to the showcase showdown in June. So we're going to invite kind of this northeast corner to come and do a pre-contest. Because not all of the kids will get to travel to Laramie, so this will be a fun way, and they can kind of tweak their robots before we go on. Um, and on the robotics side of things, they'll compete in ag robotics, so the mission mat and Samuel. I have five brand new robots that we just got through a grant, sitting in my office, ready to power up for the kids. So we should have plenty of gear hopefully for this year for lots of kids to get involved. So I'm super excited. This is just a picture of them during National 4H Week, having a ball just building with their robots. So that's a really cool, anytime, um, you guys want to jump in and see them do awesome programming things, come. Fabric and Fashion, we actually have twenty-six youth enrolled in that project this year, and we have sewing workshops. I have two volunteers that are hosting, um, sewing workshops twice a month here in Newcastle. They've done pillowcases, they're going to finish their fleece hats and start their mailbags tomorrow, and they are having tons of fun there. Just lots, it's really cool to see them learning new skills, and hopefully we'll have lots of 4H projects come county fairtime. And then Foods and Nutrition, we've got twenty-seven youth enrolled there, which has always been a really big project in Western County. And the Food Fund 4H, which is, um, four of us educators across the state partner on that. We're in the fourth year of the program, um, so it's just, we've got lots of fun recipes happening there, and when they complete, um, the three questions and submit their pictures, they get a fun cooking gadget in the mail. So I bear this to the liver. Um, and so with that, um, I think Danell and Matt are going to have some updates and fun stuff to talk about too, and then.
Let's, uh, I wish Erin would tutor on, um, through her own horn a little bit more. So, uh, we have received a robotics grant for 4H across the entire state of Wyoming. Erin is actually going to be in February traveling down to Texas to, I think, observe and bring some things back from the robotics, uh, competition there. So we're utilizing Erin as someone to help really train and educate 4H educators across the state. So we're really lucky to have her. Yeah. Um, so you all, uh, I hope maybe you remember me, I came out and visited a little while ago. Uh, so I was the Associate Director, sort of assigned to this half of the state because our other Associate Director, Bridger Fates, um, who was over CBH and A and R, lived over in Evanston, so we just split the state down the middle and we handled the county commission meetings according to where we lived. But now that we have Danell with us, um, who's over Community Vitality Health, Ag Natural Resources, I'm over 4H. Um, Danell is going to be handling this county because we both live in Laramie, so we kind of drew a diagonal across the state. And I was generous enough to give her all these great counties near the Black Hills. Then I took Evanston. So yeah, I just wanted to come out and introduce Danell, and you'll probably still see my face now and again, but you'll likely see more of Danell's.
Yeah, we'll tag him on things depending on what the needs are. Um, Erin, you mentioned that Vicki is retiring. Uh, incredible twenty-eight years of just outstanding community-based service. And so really appreciate that, and it's, um, it's hard to imagine trying to find someone to, it's like, oh, your shoes moving forward. But on that note, um, I would be open and would welcome feedback from the commission. Thinking about that position, we would, we're excited at the university to move her position forward and to try and find our next Vicki, uh, someone who's rooted in the community and really cares and who's driven by the community's needs. As we get ready to open that position, um, I do have an opportunity to, to modify the position description. And so I think it's always a good time to, to pause and come to our commissioners and give you an opportunity to share your thoughts about the community's needs. Um, it's been twenty-eight years, and so needs we recognize can evolve. This is a community vitality and health position. That team is deliberately defined really broadly, um, and so it spans the work that Vicki has been doing, and I think there's a lot of demand with, for kind of food and nutrition. We have folks that work more on, um, kind of health and wellness aspects. And then we have folks like Julie Daniels and then Martin, who work more on maybe community development, um, you know, board training, leadership development. So CBH is, can be a very broad umbrella, and as we advertise the position, we can either keep it broad with the hopes of attracting a big pool, a deep pool of applicants, and then see who is the best fit. Or if, if you have strong thoughts about what you're looking for, which is a specific need, we can narrow the position description. Always at the risk of the pool getting smaller when we do that, but it's about trying to find the right strategy, to find the right fit, um, for this community as we move forward. So I'm all ears, I have my business cards that I can review so that you have a chance to think about it, have to talk about it. I'm happy to come back sometime if you'd like to discuss in person, but you're also welcome to call me, email me, whatever is most convenient for you.
I would agree, you got some pretty big boots to fill there. Um, I like the idea of keeping that option a little bit more on the broad side, personally, just because we might be limited on, um, volume of, of availability for that position fill. But, um, if it was broad on the front side, we could still fine tune that down after the applicants were hired.
So, um, I'll get to last name incorrectly, but the board training, Mary, what's her last name?
Mary Martin.
Martin, where does she live?
Jackson, I think.
Okay, so, um, my, my feeling is to direct it more towards the board training. We have a lot of issues here. I mean, we have extreme issues here with board training. Um, I would like to see that somewhat, um, narrowed and to be on this side of the state. Um, having that distance and, and involving Zoom and Teams, when you have a physical presence, as you well know, um, changes the world. Um, body language, um, all that stuff gives us so much more, and we learn so much from that. So I'm going to narrow it while I think she's been wonderful, and I do. Um, I, because, did you just learn what I just learned about the tomato with the husk? It's unreal.
We have to go up with samples.
Yeah, you will, you'll have to serve it.
Someone we trained.
And, and so when, when I see a need, I, I, I see that extreme. We have, um, and probably duly justified, but we have an extreme fear of boards here. And so we do not, we have not developed a comfort level for people to step into the board role. And I would like us to give our community in north of us and south of us, the whole general region, more of a, of a base of, of help of that, because we are suffering. We have boards that do not have people on them.
And Julie is down here in Charlotte, so it's, you know, quite a trip to come up. And Mary's on retirement, she won't be with us much longer, unfortunately. She's putting fifty what year?
Fifty-one.
Are you guys going to the Bahamas together?
Might.
You cannot use this county credit card, sorry. Well, we've got some, some interesting conversations in other communities about reaching into, um, inward schools and trying to develop those leadership skills at younger ages as well. Kind of creating a culture of leadership in the community. I don't know if that's an opportunity here or not, but. And I, and I, and I think with your, obviously your ties with the 4H, I mean, I'm always going to be a big 4H. My father was the county ag extension agent here, so I, I have a little love for it. I, I've watched the changes happen, not always pleasantly surprised, but that's the world as it is right now. So 4H is always going to be an integral part, and it always should be. And I think the school issue of your leadership and all that is just imperative because we're in such a strange place, which would also be a foundation for, for giving back to your community as such as boards. So I do appreciate your work, and I would like to see that explored here, um, because I don't think tomato, what is it, what was that called again?
Tomatillo.
Tomatillo.
You're missing out on something.
Obviously, it's been a tomato lot. There's no good thing in a tomato unless it's, it's homegrown, because those things on the, I don't know what you call those things on the cars yourself, but they're red and they're, they're, they should be banned.
A vegetable in the larval, larval stage.
That's it, yeah.
And what's, sumo competitions for ag or robotics?
So the sumo is, we put two of the robots.
They fight.
On a circle, and whoever pushes the other one out of the circle or flips it over so it can't drive wins. It's a lot of fun. And then the ag robotics is the mission mat, so they get, um, in January, we'll assign them, I think there's eight missions. Um, and so they have from January to June to tackle, um, and conquer those eight missions. And then the day of the competition, we unveil four mystery, um, challenges, and they have an hour to, um, do additional programming and building before the competition starts to see if they can, if what they've learned throughout the first six months gives them the tools to, yeah. Um, it's a really cool, and that's what's fun. Um, so going to Texas, so Texas robotic, or Texas 4H has created this ag robotics, um, that we use. And I think there's eight states that also use their robotics contest, um, rules and guidelines. Um, it actually invited me to sit on and help design the twenty-six version, or the twenty-seven contest mat, which is kind of great, it's not in a million years would I ever be doing, but it's kind of fun. Um, tell the kids there's always something to learn. So I'm excited to go to Texas. Uh, we invited one of the team up to Laramie for Epic, so she came and presented to all of the educators, and we met and discussed, and so we've got lots of really cool stuff happening with the 4H robotics. Um, yes.
Yeah, it is something to, coming not from a robotics background, we, uh, we had a couple of, um, kids from a club down in Cheyenne go and do it at the Capitol as like a demonstration so that people walking in and out of the Capitol could see it. And the kids literally pull out a laptop and program the robot, like this, this period from January to June, like, they find out, okay, the robot has to pick things up and put them in a box, and they build a robot from scratch and program it to do that, which is just.
And it's really cool because we use Texas's, and so it's ag-based. So last year was, um, like coastal farming, so it was a lot down there on the coast. The year before was in a vet clinic setting, so transporting animals and samples. And so then they also had to learn, like breeds of animals, um, because we, the day of the contest, they may have to move the Hereford steer or the Black Angus steer. So it's really fun pairing agriculture and robotics. And the hope is that these kids will then have some skills to go into, I mean, you look at John Deere, the tractors now are insane, what, yeah. So the hope is, is we're creating kids that want to go into agriculture and science.
They could have used that robotics to get that bomb off of the car.
Yeah.
Could have been some cool kids going, I could have done that.
No, I mean the positive side, not the negative. We're going to train them for, only, put us all. So our other ask today, we had talked about, I think we were here a month ago at this point, is transitioning our office admin position to a university housed position versus a county house. So it would still be county funded, but it would be like my, the portion of my salary that comes from the county that it would go to, UW Extension would bill the county for that. Uh, and then, but that position would be hired and housed under a university position. I think Matt might have more.
Yeah, there's a couple of counties that already have a setup like that, Carvin County, Laramie County, positions, there's a couple of them exactly.
Kirk County is.
Kirk County, yeah. Um, and with that position being housed at the university, I guess there's just more HR levers and tools that are available to us because we have a whole, geez, I don't know, ten, twelve people working on our HR department. So, um, I like to think it's beneficial for both parties, so we're, we're hoping y'all are still interested in that.
And Becky gave me, like, the fringe benefits, like, so if we hired a new employee, they came on in, if they took all of the fringe benefits through the county, um, it would actually cost more money than if we transitioned it to the university position, um, because the fringe benefits are lower on the universities. So there's a little bit of cost savings.
Also, we'll see, yeah, we think we're cutting it a little bit, but we'll be careful.
As far as the board is concerned, it's the last time we've talked about it, I think. Aren't we all pretty well on board with going that route? It's the time we've talked about it, I think. Aren't we all pretty well on board with going that route?
I have a question on, on just the university oversight. Is there, is there like a curriculum or anything that you go off of as far as your department? Would that be provided by a university, or do you still, would you still create your own curriculum?
Like job description for that position?
Not necessarily job description, but, um.
Training?
The duties of your, your curriculum. I guess I'm wrong.
He's referring to like through a question, let's pay, like, how many, which is this office admin position? We're talking about moving the office admin position.
Yes.
To be a minister by any measure.
Yeah, so I would be correct in my position, like, I would be direct supervisor as county coordinator over that position, kind of like I was currently, just with, then the HR, like, university HR behind that.
There, there could be, it sounds like there's an, an advantage maybe to us involved in the university. What would be the benefit on the university's side of having you affiliated with the university?
Well, so, so, well, I mean, mine already is, like, it, so this is the office admin position. So filling our, that we would just move that position as a university employee versus a county. That would be all, so job description would stay basically the same of what we're doing.
And I don't think, for example, vacation and holidays especially, right now, sometimes Erin and I are off and the admin is working because of the county days are not the same as ours. So it'd be easy if we were all on the same schedule, for one, I think. That would be one, one nice benefit.
About answering your question, Erin.
Yeah, kind of, I always just, I'm always cautious when it comes down to, um, certain strategies that universities have, and when it comes down to, uh, curriculum-associated strategies, sometimes that might be a little bit different than county strategy. I understand. I think that, like, the information that's being provided by people in the office wouldn't, wouldn't change. It would remain. Thank you.
That's true.
I just want to provide, put on, in there too, when you have employee issues, it becomes very difficult how to handle it when one person in that office is county, other people aren't, and it kind of creates a quagmire because then the university's kind of program, but then they don't really have control over what's going on with that employee issue. And so, um, recent experiences shed light on that. It caused Erin probably more stress than was needed, so. And it's always good to have more HR help, since we don't have. And it's always good to have more HR help, since we don't have much around here.
We just felt like this was a good time to have this discussion and hopefully make that change as we look to refill that position.
Being in the middle of our budget year, really, is there any reason that that can't happen at this point? It shouldn't change anywhere budget-wise, right?
So the budget will stay, the conversation I've had with Ann Groveson, who's the business manager at UW extension that would bill, that it will just, she'll just submit a bill quarterly for the salary and the fringe benefits. But it will stay within what is budgeted for. Like it won't change our budget line item for the admin position. It will just, instead of you writing the check to the employee once a quarter, you'll write a check to UW, and then UW will pay monthly.
When that position is hired, we send along a compensation agreement, so you all would know, know best then.
But yeah, it will stay within where we're budgeted.
Sure.
So with that, because, and I apologize, when the catch happens, you know, it's with me. So I apologize, I may have missed a question or two, and so if I repeat that again. So whose handbook did they call under?
Universities.
Okay, so then, when we have differences of opinion versus handbooks, how are we going to handle that? Are we going to put it out that that becomes a university position? Is that how we're doing it?
So that, that's what we're asking, is to make this, that it would be a complete university employee. So then all HR would be handled through UW.
So my other question is salary based then too?
Yes.
Then we may have issues. I mean, if we get to determine the salary, that's one thing. If the university wanted to determine the salary, then maybe.
So my understanding of it with Ann is that all of the admins that are in this position, so they're the county admins hired through UW, it's still, we still have to play within the county budgeted salary. Like we can't...
So the pay scale at the university is a, like, we would be saving money, you think, from what's, from what you all have budgeted? I'm fairly, I'm fairly confident that when we discuss the money, that what you have budgeted comes in above our midpoint. So we're looking at a lower salary. But when we, when we go to hire that position, that's always in consultation with the commission. Like I would never hire a position and surprise you with a figure.
And the fr, like, and I don't know Marty, if you, so Becky gave me all of the fringe benefits. And so the fringe, so if our new employee, when we hire one, comes in and would take all of the county offered fringe benefits, it would cost more than if, like, than the UW provided benefits. Because UW can have, provide them at a lower cost, because there's a lot more of them on the insurance.
Do you know about how much they might save here? I can't, I know we
I can tell you
Found some numbers.
When we had the discussion, what you all had budgeted was high enough that we were concerned if we brought someone in. And at that, here, it would lead to an equity issue with the rest of the university admins. So we would have to hire under what you have budgeted.
Correct.
So they're not going to come in and make way more than any county employee. They'll make probably a little less, actually.
Well, and one of, pardon me, one of the issues that we run into is when we have these divided, and we ran into a West parent, is when we get raises and benefits. And it's very hard for us to explain to other parts of the county why this happens, why this happens, and why this doesn't happen. So I think that just has to be explained very thoroughly.
And a good case of, like, a good example of that is, I don't know, about first year after I was employed, like, it was that 16 or 14% raise that the county gave the cost of living. Well, that didn't affect, like, it doesn't affect my salary. So like, it kind of works both ways of...
But what do we expect here compared to some others?
Thank you. Coming in. I think, I think you have our, unless somebody had something against it.
Close it. So is, like, is that something we need to, like, make a motion to do? So that then we can, because it'll have to go, that, so then the next step is UW, like, will take this back in hand, we'll put it in as a
I would feel more comfortable you guys find somebody to hire at whatever rate, and then we make a motion to improve that, I guess, but.
I kind of have the same, because I'd like to see what your compensation package is before we make that determination. And also have the understanding of what our policies are concerning, like our credit card, which we just, excuse me again, which we just passed. That there's a checkmark or something that they understand, that if this county issues them a credit card, you will follow our rules, but if the state does, then you follow your rules, and then we don't question. But I think I need, we need all those little pieces out, so that we're not piecing it together after the fact. So I think I'm in agreements that we'd like the total package before we make that determination.
And my understand, like, and Becky, she, like, we had the county travel credit card. But at that point, as a university employee, they wouldn't have a county travel credit card. It would all be...
How are they funding them to get to their premiums then? Is it county funded if they're a university employee?
And it was
Something like a state?
Yes.
I believe that's county funded.
So it would just be reimbursed and
It'd be reimbursed.
Not the credit card.
Yeah.
Like, my thought is, is that because they wouldn't be a county employee, they would not be issued a county credit card, it would be more expensive.
Yeah.
So.
I would, I would say, since like you said that Kirk County and other counties do this, perhaps they have a policy already, you have a policy all written up. If you go back and maybe get something like that for us to look at, just so that it's clear before we make that decision.
Sure. I think there's a couple of levels here, right? We can send you that in the UW job posting that we'd like to post, and then get your sign off on that. And then we can talk numbers, maybe outside of an open meeting, and we can get you that compensation agreement. So before anyone starts being paid, you all have to sign off on the diagnosis. So we can talk about the posting, what the agreement looks like, and compensation.
And my goal with this is that we would advertise right after the first of the year, since we're right up against the holidays. And with the university holiday break, we'll be out those last two weeks of December, like, so I don't want to advertise it. And then, you're like, oh, well, we're on vacation. So the goal is, is that we would have everything ready to roll, to advertise, like, January 5th, with hopefully, so it would run for two weeks. We would review applicants, interview, and hopefully have somebody on board to start the first of February. Because I need it to happen.
I haven't looked, I have seen that the governor has put his budget out, and that's not just something he just perused to study. So I haven't had a chance yet to look. So have there been any adjustments to the extension program?
From the state level, I don't believe any of the state funding is changing. I did, while we were here, actually want to invite, if you all, given what we expect to happen with the property tax situation next year, it seems like that that may be increasingly affecting county budgets. UW is trying to put together a work group of people from around the state to talk about some, maybe some ways to mitigate that, or some what-if scenarios of what we might need to do if that 50% does go through, and what that's going to do to county budgets, and how it's going to affect extension. So while we were here today, I wanted to invite you all, if someone from the commission would like to participate, we'd love to have you. So I can reach out to y'all in an email afterwards about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, folks.
So we'll provide some follow-up to that. Do you want us back, me back, the next commissioner meeting? We can kind of finalize all of that, and then be ready to advertise in January.
Thank you, folks.
So we'll provide some follow-up to that. Do you want us back, me back, the next commissioner meeting? We can kind of finalize all of that, and then be ready to advertise in January. Because I'm going to be the long ranger in my office in January. It's going to be really quiet and really busy.
Yeah, come to the next meeting, bring whatever
Okay.
Can, maybe we can get the baller off.
Okay, sounds great.
We're going to be three here, so hopefully the three.
We can get you this out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I was pretty?
Yeah. Walked in.
Poor world.
I just directed them around here.
Thank you, guys.
Please. Yep. Thank you, Aaron.
All right. Contractor, through quality petition, to employee handler.
Interesting way of spelling.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wondered why I was having to. Easy to meddle in.
You're going to be another current out of that chat.
I don't have an updated, even, I never got.
Did you?
What did you update?
I have the old one out in my pickup. Grab one, I can look at that.
I never got any. Oh, he didn't do it.
One more.
Yeah, okay, just copy it real quick.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Maybe we don't need to. We're going to skip this, okay.
They muted the exercise, look at this.
They got us back on time.
Waited for a while.
New business, airport.
Backseat table.
Yeah. This is the Airport Improvement Program Certificate of State Grant and Aid. Just needs chairman's signature on it. It does break down what the grant originally was, and the amendments that were made to it, and what the local cost has been.
Look at this, that was yours. That's funny, I thought it was just like that.
Reading. Reading is happy. Did a lot of things to the top of different big buildings, because our, like, our air conditioning is out. It's like 50 degrees in there. We should all have it.
It's like that over at the newsletter. I don't know if they've got it fixed, but yesterday and today, no heat.
Yeah, they turned up the heat.
Well, he didn't see a pile of candy in He didn't see a pile of candy in front of you, so he had to go get his own.
He's like, he asked me where the candy is. My pockets, maybe we can't eat it. He said he didn't want any last time, and I gave it to him, and he ate everything I had in the cup. That is rude. That is rude.
Any questions on this from anybody?
Just go ahead, here, I'll recuse myself from the vote, but I do have a little information on that. The local fee will be covered by the penalty. It does show a dollar amount there, I think of, is it 2200?
2240.
2240. Because the hangar project was not completed on its guaranteed date, there was a dollar amount that the contractor had to sacrifice for that. So within, within that dollar amount, that was allotted for uncompletion of the hangar. That, that will more than cover the local fees on that.
Yep. So already made a motion to, I agree with you, signature.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Here, not all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Okay. See any catch on? Well, question.
Yeah, those ones.
Yeah, first. Okay.
Called the chairwoman, wasn't going to make sure.
That was during the Biden years.
Thank God for the transition.
LGLP.
Q plus T plus N.
So
Sorry, we were on a roll.
In accordance with LGLP rules and regulations, Chapter 2, Section 1, board members shall be elected to participating in local governmental entities. Each participating entity through its government body shall be allowed one vote for each position. This year, the LGLP has one board position up for election. At-large member, the three term, year terms for this position begins January 1. The following are the three nominations received by LGLP and accepted by the candidates for the election of the LGLP board and out by the quarter. Brad Basser Base is current chairman of the LGLP with 18 years of tenure on the board. He's the longest-serving member. He previously served as a Hot Springs County Commissioner, including as chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Amy Miller is a lifelong resident of Platte County. Grown up on her family ranch, she has a bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of Wyoming. A lot of board involvement appears within the county. Brad also graduated in 85 from the University of Nebraska with a bachelor's in electrical engineering and mastered, and is a master electrician. Jessica Weaver is a Wyoming business owner, Navy veteran, and Ranchester Tannum Council member with 15-plus years in commercial insurance and governance. She founded and grew one of the land's top-rated name-pending-owned women and veteran-owned agencies, specializing in complex commercial property and flood risk with Ironton Valley Insurance Group.
I'm going to move to not do that.
That, it's too late, I'm in the middle of my motion to use his infinite experience to checkmark the box on behalf of the board commission.
Are you serious?
I haven't got a second yet, so who knows if I'm serious.
Yeah, oh my gosh. I'll second that.
Then discussion.
Thank you so much for doing that. Appreciate it.
Brad also is currently chairman of LGLP board, so I don't want to take anything away from him as far as.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don't throw your guilt on us.
We'll hold it up in nine.
He's got a quarter in their pocket.
Mr. Chairman, none of us have one that has three sides.
Call for a vote.
Question? Way to privilege, you're wasting time.
I know. Sorry.
You can take all the time that you want, we just got the board motion for you to check the box.
It's all we have.
Okay. All those unfair of me checking the box at some point.
Thank you.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Wasn't that our decision for us?
Really, it was not that hard.
I'm going to think about it a little bit.
I'm going to even make a phone call or two.
That's your only other friend.
All right. Public comment, is there any public comment?
I apologize, I didn't get on the agenda. I was just going to do a quick update for the jail. So the fingerprint machine, I did some more research, and I apologize, I intended to give an email out to you guys. Did a little more digging, talked with Cheyenne a little more. What they're going to do is leave that server running as long as they can, so we will continue to be able to use it until we can't. And then when that doesn't work, they'll give you the opportunity to mail print cards and things like that in. But I just keep in mind, when the machine does go down, if it goes down, between now and now in that time, we'll have to make that decision to purchase a new machine, so.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
And then when that doesn't work, they'll give you the opportunity to mail print cards and things like that in. But I just keep in mind, when the machine does go down, if it goes down, between now and now in that time, we'll have to make that decision to purchase a new machine, so. So we've got a Band-Aid on it for now, knock on wood, it'll hold. Now that the government opened, I'm not sure, I'm going to call her back and see if we're past the point of getting the grant. She said we will be first on the list. And I don't know if, I don't know if the last time, somehow we slipped through the cracks when they purchased new machines. I thought this was the newer updated machine. This was, they've updated them since the one we had and we fell through the cracks. So when they said it is the end of life, that she was, she questioned that, and then when she got to looking through her documentation, we did fall through the cracks and we did not get the updated machine. So we are first on the list when that grant comes available, so.
So did they, everybody else that didn't fall through the cracks, did they get their machines basically paid for?
Yes. The only thing they have to do now is just that purchase agreement that they had to come up with their own purchase agreement through their county budgets.
So if we, something happens to our machine, which you're telling me though, is we're going to be on the hook for paying for it if there's no grant available?
Yes.
Seems awesome.
So, but like I said, we do have a few workarounds, knock on wood, so. I just wanted to, like I said, just give you an update on what I found out. And again, heaven forbid, if that time comes where we just can't make that machine work, we'll have to have a different conversation, so.
Did they say that there is going to be grant money for it, or?
So what it was, was with the government shutdown, all grants were done. So now that it's reopened, that's why I said I got to find out if they're just going to jump back in and be able to get the grants or if they got to wait till the next fiscal year to put in for those grants. And those grants, grants, they're not necessarily guaranteed, but she doesn't foresee any reason for us not to, or for them to not get the grant, so.
You know, keep us updated on whether they're out with that grant and stuff.
Yes. So, but yeah, just an update.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to ask, good thing. Are we going to get a copy of that credit card thing, their grants? Because the only thing that we usually, our credit card thing, holders quickly. And that's really expensive. Just make sure to give us a preapproval. We've got a quit books coming up in December. And we get a monthly charge of $12 for employees for payroll on that. I really hate quit books because of that, because it costs $2,000, costs $12 every month. For, and I really would, really would like to try to find something different, but that's what they are. We might have to address that. Crazy. Yeah. Anyone else?
Thank you. Any else, public comment? Mr. Chairman?
723, how long do we have? I'd like to have a discussion at some point about the joint powers dispatch, just to have a discussion of where we're at, what has happened, just to fill in the cracks since I've been gone, where we're at, what's going on with that, just as an appointment of some type. I understand there was a fire drill here Friday?
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be cool if we got an update on what the mock-up was, so that we could understand what was happening on that. So I think that's very cool that there was one. Good to see it. But I'd like to be a part of the, hear what the discussion of the mock-up was. I also found some more information, I didn't see it on the thing on Painted Hills, which I'd like to have that conversation.
Resolution on Painted Hills.
Yeah, I found the old stuff in the commissioner books of why it wasn't established. Like, let me know, some more information, but I don't know if I can clean that from there, but I just think we have that conversation. That's it.
Can you send that over, sir?
Oh, no, I don't send any.
Or? Get it to us. The board, the council unanimously also approved of the account for their four. One thing that they were interested in is as revenue was being deposited into that account, we would have considered it in the money market, so.
I was going to echo on Marty's first dispatch deal. I think we need to, I'd like, is there a new director now, or new, there still isn't?
No, we're just an interim or acting director.
Who is that?
Tommy.
I wonder, would you invite her up, Amy?
Mr. Chairman, I would like, if we could, if at all possible, to have invitations of Upton and City to the city, so that could be jointly, we're not being repeated, but the update could cover all of us, so that we knew where we were on this whole thing.
Yeah, I'd like to know, is this working?
Yes, I just want an update. I've been outside of the loop for a while.
I heard a little chatter that there's some issues making.
Right.
Be nice to.
During January, I mean, I, you know.
I haven't got an answer yet on the turnaround yet through the school district for those six kids, but I'll keep trying that and then, one other thing. Oh, I went to Upton City meeting on the 10th, I think it was, and just brought up the attention of the still missing some board members for the MTV issue deal and then also about our search for potentially not necessarily replacing the service we have for Title 25, but what's kind of come up with this other guy interested in it. That was a service they even might be interested in, but didn't sound like they're.
But these are all others.
MT crew was very interested, so.
On that, I'm glad to see some interest in maybe a relief, if you want to call it, on the Title 25, but it's interesting, the lack of requirements probably, would probably put it that way as far as, maybe some have a nursing degree or a CNA position or something like that. It always, it always sounds good, ooh, that sounds like that person's more qualified, although we really don't have anything to base it off of, maybe that sounds better than nothing.
Yeah.
So, you know, a cage or even if the volunteers of age to where they're physically capable of handling something that gets out of control, or, I mean, none of that's really laid out stone on the front side.
Yeah, I know, the, is it Chief Mills? He alluded to the fact that he'd had some experience in this field back in, wherever it was, Pittsburgh or not Pittsburgh, but Pennsylvania where he worked. But I kind of told him, I don't think that there is much here in the Wyoming statutes as far as requirements, like it's just shooting from the hip almost, and that's not a comfortable place for me to be in. You put somebody in liability, so, I don't know, it's, and secondarily too, there's going to come a day when Mr. Taylor won't be able to do it, so we probably need a second option. And I don't know, I mean, if there was two, I don't, if there was two full-time running ambulances here in the county or in Newcastle, would they still turn away from calling somebody, I wonder?
Mr. Chairman, that would be up to, but I think that they do transports all the time.
But it sounds like they can't, they don't have the funds right now to have two ambulances going. Is that what he was telling us? Okay. So it's understandable, you pulling in, let's drive all the way to Chiner, Casper.
But Mr. Chairman, there's an interesting there, because I mean, they do transports all the time. And why isn't this under that umbrella of a transport? So, I mean, I think it's just a timing issue, but in my personal, weather was a factor, but they were doing transports and they couldn't get back in time. Well, that was an agreed upon thing. So I don't know, I mean, it's an interesting dilemma that we have, but I do think we should put some parameters around it because it's uncomfortable, it's weird.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was kind of going to go along with that, you know, it leaves us in a kind of an awkward position because you got an individual that comes up and is more or less applying or volunteering or whatever you want to call that for the relief position, and what do we do? You know, do we say you're hired, or he says, okay, you know, what do I have to, what are my bounds that I need to work within? And you really don't have a lot there. I think it is, it is a difficult situation.
Yeah, I don't really, there'd be anybody that's doing it, but, you know, I think from what I gather visiting the dawn, it's not a real enjoyable experience and it's, most often than not, it's 11 o'clock at night and it's probably sad in some ways, I guess, but anyhow.
Oh, I went to Uptown City meeting on the tenth, I think it was. And just brought up the attention of the, um, still missing some board members for the, uh, MTD district deal and then also about our search for potentially, not necessarily replacing the service we have for Title Twenty-Five, but but what's kind of come up with this other guy interested in it. That was a service that he might be interested in, but didn't sound like they're.
But these all are.
MT crew is very interested, so. Yes, sir.
On that, on that note, I'm glad to see some interest in maybe a relief, if you want to call it, on the Title Twenty-Five. It's interesting, the, the lack of requirements probably would probably put that way as far as, or detail there. Um, maybe, maybe some have a conversant degree or a CNA position or something like that. It always, it always sounds good. Ooh, that sounds like that person's more qualified, although we really don't have anything to base it off of. Better than, that sounds better than nothing.
Yeah.
So, you know, a cage or, um, even if the, the volunteers of age or where they're physically capable of handling something that gets out of control or, I mean, none of that's really laid out stone on the front side.
Yeah, I know, the, is it Chief Mills? Uh, he, he, he alluded to the fact that he'd had some experience in this field back in wherever it was, Pittsburgh or not Pittsburgh, but Pennsylvania where he worked. But, uh, I kind of told him I don't think that there is much here in the Wyoming statutes as far as requirements. Like it's just shooting from the hip almost, and that, that's not a comfortable place for me to be in. You put somebody in my ability. So, I don't know, it's. And secondarily too, there's gonna come a day when Mr. Taylor won't be able to do it. So we, we probably need a second option. And I don't know. I mean, if there was two, I don't, if there was two full-time running ambulances here in the county or in Newcastle, would they still turn away from calling somebody, I wonder?
Mr. Chairman, that would be up to, but I think that they do transports all the time.
But it sounds like they can't, they don't have the funds right now to have two, um, ambulances going. Is that what he was telling us? Okay. So it's understandable if you pull an ambulance, drive all the way to Chinatown or Casper.
But Mr. Chairman, there's an interesting there because, I mean, they do transports all the time. And why isn't this under that, that umbrella of a transport? So, I mean, I think it's just a timing issue. But in my personal, weather was a, a factor, but they were doing transports and they couldn't get back in time. Um, that was an agreed upon thing. So I don't know. I mean, it's an interesting dilemma that we have. And, but I do think we should put some parameters around it because it's, it's uncomfortable. It's weird.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was kind of gonna go along with that, you know, it, it leaves us in a kind of an awkward position because you got an individual that comes up and is more or less applying or volunteering or whatever you want to call that for, for the relief position and what do we do? You know, do we say you're hired or, and he says, okay, you know, what do I have to, what are my bounds that I need to to work with in, and you really don't have a lot there. I think it is, it is a difficult situation.
Yeah, I don't, uh, really any, gonna be anybody that's doing it from what, you know, I, I think from what I gathered visiting the dorm, it's not a real enjoyable experience and it's most often than not, it's eleven o'clock at night and it's probably, uh, sad in some, some ways, I guess, but. Anyhow. Yes, sir. I was saying, come for a board. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you, can you guys update the provider of service agreement for the ambulance service? And add a little bit more into their provider of service and add the Title Twenty-Five added to that agreement?
Mr. Chairman, that's a good, that's a good thought process.
You guys gave them extra funds in their provider of service.
It's a good thought process.
And are in control of that contract.
It's a great thought process. It really is. Something to think about. The other, the other kind of behind that. Boy, I'm glad you got that looking, not me. Is also debating it with the sheriff's department of, of, of deciding whether or not we hire another. They may have to be fingerprint analysis too, or not analysis, but you know what I'm saying? Do you understand? Uh, I mean, the conversation needs to be had of perhaps we have to hire another one that does that type of thing or puts it in the rotation, so there is that other, and does other duties such as, as fingerprints. Um, just, I think we just have to have that conversation because we're gonna be at a weird, I think we're lucky that we're not at a weird place. Uh, we're at a really cold place right now, so let's.
All right. Do we got anything else? Sorry.
Sure.
Nothing else. Please come for the board at this point. I appreciate everybody turning in and taking part and reading through.